Well, that was lovely, lovely music. That was Nubisi, Nufor, did I say it well?
Yes.
Pardon me? All right, hold on a second. I am, hold on. Aubrey Chang, Aubrey. I fully called you the wrong name, I'm sorry sweetheart. You start getting a little older, you get my age, you miss those things. Beautiful prelude music sweetheart, thank you for being here tonight. Alrighty, we're gonna call this meeting in Temecula City Council to order. Let's see if I can get through the rest of the meeting. We're gonna start off with an invocation by our Prime Minister Aaron Adams and then the flag salute by Councilmember Mary Ann Edwards. Please stand with me.
Would you please stand? Bow your head. Dear heavenly Father Lord, we just, we give you thanks for this, this day. We give you thanks for the city that Temecula is and is becoming. We pray for the people of Temecula, the safety of our residents. We pray for wisdom and discernment for the city council, the city staff. Lord, we lift up our first responders day to day and we just ask that you protect them and be with their families. And we just ask for your continued guidance and your hand on this amazing blessed city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Would you please join me in honoring our flag in our country by saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you, you can be seated. Madam City Clerk, can you give us a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwank.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Nigar.
I am here. This is a time for our presentations and proclamations and since I messed up, since I called Aubrey Nubisi, I think I'm gonna call you Aubrey, okay? No, Nubisi Nafor, did I say it correctly sir? Come on up to the podium. And Mayor, right, right there, and Vice Mayor Stewart has a proclamation he's going to read for you.
Sure.
And then we'll take some photographs as well.
That'd be great.
Thanks.
Let me steal the mic for a second. Okay, Article 1, Section 2 of the Constitution of the United States requires the U.S. Census Bureau to conduct, conduct an accurate count of the population every 10 years. The city of Temecula receives federal funding annually and the allocation of these federal funds is partially based on the census data. And the census data also helps us determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives and is used in redistricting of state legislators, county boards of supervisors, and city councils. And the decentennial census is a huge undertaking that requires cross-sector collaboration and partnership in order to achieve a complete and accurate count. And the U.S. Census Bureau is facing several challenges with the 2020 census, including declining response rate, technology changes, and fiscal restraints, and support from local government is critical. And the city of Temecula, in partnership with other local governments, the state, businesses, and community organizations, is committed to ensuring every Temecula resident is counted. I, Michael S. Nigar, on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula hereby proclaim that the city of Temecula recognizes the importance of the 2020 census and supports participation in helping to ensure a fair and complete and accurate count of the population. All right, thank you.
Nubisi, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please, good evening everybody. My name is Nubison Wafor and I work for the Census Bureau.
Mayor Protem will need your photo there too. Go ahead, sir.
I'm the partnership specialist for the Department of Bureau of Commerce in the Southwest Riverside. I cover here all the way from Temecula, Murrieta, Menefee, Wildomer, Hemet, Paris, and Lake Elsinore. These are the cities I cover. And as a partnership specialist, my job is to make sure that all the citizens in the Southwest Riverside are prepared to undergo the census, the census count of 2020. And you guys being council members and members of the community know how essential an accurate count is for the city of Temecula. Because we're talking right now, really, we're talking about close to $800 billion that'll be allocated, apportioned over the next 10 years. So, 800 billion times 10, we're talking about 8.8 trillion dollars. And normally, the state of California gets close to one-sixth of that amount considering the population and how important state of California is. That is why the accurate count for the census is very, very important. Why, I moved out here in 2005 and when I moved to the city of Murrieta and our second high school, now I think the city of Murrieta is probably going for their fifth high school right now, in the sense that, you know, we know how important this area is developing so fast and one of the fastest growing areas in the country. Why do I say that? We need money for what? Infrastructure, roads, school, fire departments, and everything within this area. And it's very important for us to have an accurate count. Count everybody in Temecula and Murrieta area because whatever we count is the amount of money at the end of the day you guys are going to allocate to the community to, you know, get, provide those resources. So that's why I'm here tonight. I'll be all over the city, all the nonprofit organizations, faith-based organizations going from place to place. But my first job is to introduce myself to the city, to let you guys know. So when somebody calls you guys and tells you that there's somebody out here from the Census Bureau, I don't want you guys to be like, who's that? So that would be me reaching out to the, you know, members of the community. So my job is to make sure, partner, I partner with you guys, collaborate to make sure that the city of Temecula gets counted. I met with Randy, Randy has been absolutely wonderful, Erica, in trying to form what you call the Complete Count Committee. Like, it's very, very important. I know everybody has probably a different idea what's, you know, this was gonna in the census, but you know, at the end of the day, we need to get the heads counted. Because the heads that get counted is what determines how much we get at the end of the year.
Nubisi, thank you for your service. Also, thank you for letting us know you're going to be everywhere.
Yes, thank you very much.
And again, it's, you got a hard job ahead of you, I'm sure you're putting together a good team.
Yes.
I, I know you wanted to take some photos, Mayor Protem, Stewart's gonna take some photos with you, if you turn around.
I just wanna say how cool it is that an immigrant is doing our census in the United States of America. How, I mean, that's what we are, right?
Yeah.
So it's very cool.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one public comment.
Okay, do you have a video for me?
We do have a video.
Roll the video.
A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once a speaker is called to speak, please come forward for all public hearing or council business matters on the agenda. A request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Let me make it clear, Louisa did not pull over. Because she wasn't an accident and then had to recite this. Actually, I don't know what we'd do without Louisa, she keeps us all in line. Madam City Clerk, please call the first, or first and only speaker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our first and only speaker is Daniel Ann.
Officer, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff and residents. My name's Daniel Ann, I'm a captain with Riverside County Sheriff's Department. I've met a few of you over the years in different capacity, but tonight I'm here just to introduce myself to you as the commander of the Coysburg Detention Center. That is one of our five jails for Riverside County that's just outside of your city's jurisdiction. And of course, with that, your primary booking location for your, for your police department. I've been there for the last six months and over that time, it, you know, different cities may have different questions and you as city officials sometimes get questions from your constituents. I want you to know that you can come to me or send me an email or come to my office if you have an issue that you want us to look up or to take care of your constituent. So I've left my business card with the city clerk for each of you and you may reach out for those reasons, or if you just want to get an official tour of the jail, I can hook you up with that. Or if you just have some general questions for the Sheriff's Department, I just wanted to give you one more point of contact. We work very well with Lieutenant Rails and Captain McConnell and the other city agencies, so it shouldn't be an issue, but now you have one more point of contact, so that's my only purpose here today. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Well, Cap, welcome, welcome to the area and, and welcome to your new assignment. Anybody have any questions for the cap? No, again, welcome, I may take you up on the tour.
Okay, give me a call, appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you for your time, enjoy your evening.
Thanks. And that was our only speaker, huh? There are tours and then there's unofficial tours. I just want the official one. Alrighty. Yes, there's the impromptu tours. All right, now's the time for city council reports. I bet none of my council colleagues have anything to report, but I guess I'm wrong. Okay, Mr. Schwank, go for it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick items, I do have a slide. So, Schools Back in Session, Build a Boat Regatta is, is an annual event that the city hosts, I wanna say this is the eighth year. Those pictures are obviously of my children from the very first and second year. We have a long history of successful trips across the CRC pool. It is ingrained in our DNA, I guess you could say. We're really looking forward to getting out there. It is such a fun event, it's sold out, it sells out immediately, but you can still come and watch, there's a ton of, ton of fun to watch and be out there. And, you know, I know at last night's Community Services Commission meeting, Chairperson Willis sort of threw out the gauntlet, but I guess all I can say is I just hope you get a little farther off the dock this year.
They didn't even get off the wall last year, I don't think.
Tried to take a photo, but my shutter speed isn't that fast, he was already at the bottom.
We have a plan.
At the bottom.
And then, and then moving along to our Adopt a Park program, it, so far, the, the program is off to a running start. Our family donated what's called a Little Free Library. This is a, a place where people can share books. My, my wife, as you know, is a literacy specialist with the Temecula Valley Unified School District. She's very passionate about literacy and reading and, and just getting people out and enjoying books. And so, we built this library and, and placed it out the lake. It's a, it's been received extremely well. The books overturn twice a day, so you'll get 20, 30 books a day in and out of that, that library. So, this is just the start, I know we've had some other folks look at adopting parks and, and we're sort of well on our way to that really great program that, that you started. So, very excited with this new addition to Harvest and Community Park. Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Mayor Protem, Stewart.
All right, well, today I attended the Temecula Valley School District Active Shooter Training. And it couldn't have happened, I mean, this whole situation is crazy, what's happening in, in our society, and it's, it's crazy that we have to be concerned about things like this, but this is like the new normal. So, we wanna prepare our citizens, over 700 Temecula Valley High School, our, the whole school district showed up for this active shooter situation training. So, the city is actually gonna put one on for our residents. So it's September 26th, it'll be at 5:30 at the Mary Phillips Senior Center. And you do have to reserve a spot for this because there's just limited amount of seating and we kinda wanna know, just so we can prepare our officers, what, what they're gonna have to deal with. So, it's a two-part, one, first one is active shooter, and then the second one is actually gun safety, which is also a big deal because probably most of the shootings that will take place in this country will be some kid getting a hold of a firearm accidentally. So, we need to make sure whoever has a gun, they know how to care for it safely. So, that's, that's the part two of it. But, the active shooter training that I witnessed today at the Temecula Valley School District was really impressive. They did a great job, the Sheriff's Department does an absolutely fabulous job training and, and making people understand their role as first responders. And basically, if you're in this situation, you are going to be that first responder. And they even did an exercise just showing you how long the average response time is five to six minutes to one of these shooter situations. So they did a stop clock for everybody who was there, and five minutes is a long time when someone's got a weapon and he's, he's causing a lot of damage. So, very eye-opening and I'm really excited about having this program available to our citizens also.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? I have one quick one, if you put up the slide. Tonight, Cody Lee, America's Got Talent, 8:00 PM on NBC. You can vote for him, and there's the information on how you can vote for Cody, let's wish him well. Temecula, Elsinore, we all love him, and let's hope he does real well. He makes the special needs community proud, but he also makes our whole community proud. So I just wanted to give Cody a shout out. And we're gonna go home and watch him pretty soon. That's all I have. Alrighty, we're gonna move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. One, reading of the standard, wave reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of July 23, 2019. Three, approve the listed demands. Four, approve agreement with HDL, Corren, and Cone Inc. for property tax consulting and revenue recovery professional services. Five, approve agreement with Hinderleter, Delamas, and Associates for sales tax consulting and recovery fee professional services. Six, approve annual professional services agreement for property acquisition and architectural services for the Department of Public Works Capital Improvement Division for fiscal years 2020 to 24. Seven, award a contract construction to Eagle Paving Company, Inc. for the pavement rehabilitation program citywide, Enterprise Circle West and South Ryder Way and Commerce Center Drive, PW 18-12. Eight, receive and file temporary street closures for 2019 Autumn Fest events. I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Okay, that was Matt Ron.
I'll second.
And Zach Schwank. And that passes 5-0. At this time, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting in favor of the Temecula Community Services District meeting and President Stu Stewart.
All right, so I will adjourn, our turn. I will open the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Madam Secretary, please note we're all here. Are there any public comments? None. All right, we'll go on to the consent calendar, which is item number nine, to approve the minutes from July 23, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, that passes 5-0. Our director, any reports there?
Yes, Mr. President, real quick, registration for the 2020 rod run begins on Monday, and as you know, the, the date was changed to May 1st and 2nd, partly due to the weather impact in March over the past couple of years. In addition to the date change, was a simple makeup day to allow local car clubs and enthusiasts to cruise Old Town on a hot summer night, which brings us to the summer night, excuse me, Summer Cruise Night on Old Town Front Street on Friday, August 23rd from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. This cruise night will not require any registration and all hot rods are welcome to participate. So see you on the 23rd, and that concludes my report.
I will say, if you're a regular citizen, you might wanna avoid Old Town right about that same time because the roads will be open, you can make it through, but you're gonna be behind a long line of cars, so. Very cool cars.
So, what if you drive a Prius? Is that the night for you to be running down Old Town?
No, I would say not, but. Okay, general matters report.
Nothing further tonight, Ms.
Okay, anything from the Board of Directors? None. All right, I will adjourn and give it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to convene a joint meeting of the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency and the city council. Madam City Clerk, we're all here, are there any public comments? Thank you. We do have one item on the agenda, approve modifications to the ground lease, regulatory agreement, construction and loan agreement, and residual receipts note between the city of Temecula as housing successor to the former Temecula Redevelopment Agency and Temecula Gardens LP Affirmed Housing located at 28493 Pool Hole Street. This is a public hearing, so we will have a staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor Nigar and members of the city council. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the proposed resuscitation, refinancing, and rehabilitation of the Mission Village Affordable Housing Development. So just a brief overview of the presentation this evening. I'll talk about the background of the project, the proposed rehabilitation, the proposed modifications to the financing structure, the benefits to the city, and the next steps and timeline. Mission Village Apartments is an existing 76-unit affordable housing development located on Pujoal Streets. In 1998, the former redevelopment agency entered into a disposition and development agreement, or DDA, with affirmed housing for the rehabilitation of 38 existing units and the construction of an additional 38 units at very low and low affordability levels. Over 20 years later, the project is now at a point in its life cycle where it would benefit from the reinvestment and a complete rehabilitation of the project. In October 2017, Affirmed Housing approached the city with a proposal to fully rehabilitate the project, refinancing the existing loans, and resuscicate the project to extend the term of affordability for an additional 55 years. In August 2018, staff presented Affirmed's proposal to the Supportive Housing Services Subcommittee consisting of Mayor Nigar and Councilmember Ron, and the Subcommittee was supportive of the proposal, but since that time, the financial climate has changed considerably, leading to a modified proposal presented this evening. So just a reminder, the existing project is located here on Pujoal Streets, across the street from Riverbank Village, and for context, the vacant property is the future site of the proposed Vine Creek Affordable Housing Project, which was recently approved by city council. The proposed rehabilitation of the project would include both interior and exterior improvements, as well as additional site amenities. Exterior improvements will include an updated appearance and improved street presence, as well as painted exteriors. Additional site amenities will include construction of a shade structure at the pool, new landscaping and updated irrigation, as well as ADA improvements. The interiors of the units will be wholly renovated and include new kitchens, flooring, paints, and appliances. In addition, Affirmed will add energy efficiency improvements, including a large photovoltaic system, which has the added benefit of reducing utility costs for renters. The original structure of the DDA in 1998 was quite complex, and because of this, the modifications to the financial structure are also very complex. However, a more simplistic overview of the proposal is demonstrated on the screen. There are five major modifications, each of which provide a benefit to the city. The 1998 loan agreement stipulated that the RDA would deposit $305,000 annually into a pledge fund, and this pays off a portion of the debt service due on the bonds issued by the former RDA to finance the project. The proposed modification to this agreement reduces the pledge obligation from $305,000 to $295,000 a year, resulting in savings to the successor agency. Second, the 1998 ground lease, under which the former RDA agreed to lease the land on which the project sits, currently runs through 2048. The proposed modification to the ground lease extends the term to 2075, with an option to extend it until 2095. Third, the proposed modification to the ground lease also amends the structure of the residual receipts and ground rent. In the proposed modification, Affirmed will pay both upfront rent and annual rent. The upfront rent will be 60% of the net of the sales proceeds from the sale of the project, which is estimated to be approximately $761,000. This $761,000 will be contributed to the Affordable Housing Fund to assist the city in building additional affordable housing. Next, the proposed residual receipts note modification extends the term through 2075, with an option to extend it an additional 20 years. The proposed modification also increases the city's share of residual receipts each year to 65%. And then finally, the 1998 regulatory agreement outlines affordable housing covenants. In the proposed modification to the regulatory agreement, the affordability levels remain the same, but the units will remain affordable through 2075, with an option to extend until 2095. So in layman's terms, this is all very good news for the city. More simply, not only will this project provide benefits to the residents, but it will also provide benefits to the city. It protects existing affordable housing stock, it helps the city's Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers, or RENA. There is no upfront financial contribution from the city. An additional $761,000 will be added to the Affordable Housing Fund. The $305,000 annual debt service pledge is being reduced to $295,000, and new life and investment is being spent on existing affordable housing projects. So what are the next steps and the timeline? The complicated structure of the original DDA, coupled with the dissolution of redevelopment, will add several additional steps that must be completed prior to the commencement of rehabilitation. After the public hearing this evening, the project must be approved at a public hearing of the County Oversight Board of Riverside County. Once approved at the county level, staff will schedule a meet and confer with the State Department of Finance at a date to be determined. As outlined in the ground lease, the developer is obligated to meet certain deadlines associated with the rehabilitation of this project. Construction is estimated to be completed in January of 2021. So with that, it's recommended that the city council slash the Board of Directors of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency approve modifications to the ground lease, regulatory agreement, loan agreement, residual receipts note, and construction and term loan agreement for Mission Village Apartments. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions. Paul Mara from Kaiser Marston Associates is also here, and Marie Allen from Affirmed Housing is also here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff right now? I don't see any questions, Lynn. Thank you for a thorough staff report.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so at this time I will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Mr. Mayor, we only have one request to speak and it's from Marie Allen.
Good evening.
Well, Lynn did a great job, so I don't have a ton to add, but I'm here on behalf of Affirmed Housing. We are a 100% affordable developer out of San Diego, and we've enjoyed a very long and successful partnership with the city of Temecula on this project in particular since 1998, so almost as long as Affirmed has existed. So we look forward to continuing the relationship, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, and thank you to Luke and to Lynn and your staff for all your hard work so far.
Thank you. Any further speakers? At this time, we're going to close the public hearing and go to council discussion or entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Edwards, we have a second by Mayor Protem Stewart, are there any further comments? Then, log your votes. There we go. And that passes 5-0. Uh, let's see now. Mr. Executive Director, do you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight.
Any of my Sarda Board of Directors have anything to say? And we're gonna adjourn this meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting of Sarda, that's Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, to August 27, 2019, and we're also going to, we'll recess this meeting, then we're going to reconvene, uh, let's see here, hold on a second. We're doing the Financing Authority, correct? All right, good, good. Then we're gonna convene the- Then we're going to convene the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Madam City Clerk, all of my colleagues are here, do we have any public comments? Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Public Financing Authority request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item 11, approve the action minutes of July 23rd, 2019.
Move of approval.
Second.
Mary Ann Edwards, Mayor Protem Stewart, please cast your votes. And that passes 5-0. Executive Director, do you have anything for us?
Nothing further.
Any of my Board of Directors, I don't think so. So, I'll entertain an adjournment till August 27th, 2019.
Move adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public Financing Authority is adjourned. We're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, public hearing portion of our meeting. Item 12, adopt, oh, let me read the rules. Any person may submit written comments to the City Council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the City Clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item 12, adopt weed abatement lien resolution for fiscal year 2017 and 18, and 2018 and 19. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For you tonight is the weed abatement liens for fiscal years 17, 18, and 18, 19. As you know, each spring, the city begins a weed abatement of hazardous vegetation that poses a fire threat. Just to recap, on June 12th of 2018, City Council entered into an agreement with Inland Empire Property Services for the removal of hazardous vegetation. And the reason you're seeing 2017 and 2018 properties on this list is that we ran into a little bit of trouble on three properties acquiring the warrants to get on to the sites, but we were successful in that. That resulted in a missing of the successor's deadline, so that's why there's three from last year on this year's roll. In terms of abatement notification, parcel owners are notified via certified mail they need to abate weeds on an annual basis, typically in the springtime after the rains. They're given opportunity to abate the conditions prior to the city taking action. If no action is taken, the city acquires a warrant and abates the weeds on its own, and owners are billed by the city for cost recovery and a nominal administrative fee of $140. City places liens on properties of non-responsive owners if we cannot be repaid for that. And that brings us here tonight, which is the lien process. The process requires a public hearing, which is what we're doing right now. Property owners are given this opportunity to comment on the proposed liens. The resolution confirms, the resolution before the council tonight confirms the actual abatement costs incurred by the city. If approved, we will submit it to the Riverside County Treasurer and Tax Collector. And then, we have seventy-two properties that are currently on the list, that is down to sixty-seven because some properties, property owners have come in and paid the bill, so it is a total of sixty-seven, and the updated list is before you on the dais tonight. So with that, the staff has recommended that the City Council adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Temecula, ordering confirmation of the special assessments against parcels of land with the City of Temecula for costs of abatement and removal of hazardous vegetation for fiscal years 2017, 18, and 2018, 19." That concludes my report, we're available for any questions.
Thank you. I'll have a question by Mayor Protem Stewart.
Yeah, so, the abatement, is it mostly like vacant lots that go unabated?
Mostly.
Yeah.
Mostly. It could be, it could be anything, though. I mean, there could be structures on site.
Sure.
But most of it is vacant property.
And so, do we have a, the charges that we charge for the abatement, is it a pass-through? I mean, what, we contract?
Yeah, it is, it's just for cost.
Right.
So, we charge four costs for the abatement and then $140 for an administrative fee.
Okay.
Just to process the abatement and some of the city costs.
Okay.
Any other questions? I have a quick one. Luke, is it, is it fair to say that the cost, that whoever's doing the abatement charges is reasonable? And obviously, you don't want to make it so reasonable that they just say, hey, let the city go ahead and abate, but is it reasonable?
Yeah, I think it is. The costs, if you look at the exhibit in front of you, they're anywhere from $250 for a small site up to $1,500 for a very large site. We think those are reasonable costs for the type of work. You have to get heavy equipment on site in many cases to do large pieces of land, you got tractor, labor costs, there's a lot that goes into it, so we think it's reasonable.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I don't see any. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers? Alright, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and take comments from my colleagues or a motion.
Yeah, I'll move the item.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Schwank, second by Councilmember Edwards, please And we're waiting. I think it's Councilmember Ron who's.
Sorry.
We're waiting on, there we go. And that's 5-0. Okay, moving on to the next item, commission reports. Mr. Sullivan, talk to us.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing. Mr. Watts?
Nothing to report.
How about you, Mr. Willis?
I just have one thing from last night's meeting. We did realize that you literally could be in two places every single day of the month in the City of Temecula, that's how many events that we put on, and they're all fantastic, and we could be running all over the place, and we did recognize that Councilmember Schwank is at most of them, so his name came up quite often last night, but we get a great presentation from staff last night, so it was really fantastic, and I suggest that all of you come out on Friday to watch the Willis family finally get across the pool.
Alright, okay.
It's a slapdown.
Yeah, I think challenge accepted.
No, I didn't say anything about the Schwank family, just, we're going to get across.
The Willis family is going to get across.
We're just going to get across the pool, yeah.
It might take a while.
Now we're going to beat you.
You got a pull for the Willis family, okay?
I will help, I'll pitch in, I know how to tape a boat.
Are you in the water for them? I mean, if you had to?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, alright.
That's very sweet, Zach, that's very sweet.
We appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay, alright. Alrighty, let's see here, public safety report, what do we got tonight?
Good evening. Deputies with Temecula Sheriff's Station responded to or generated 6,529 calls. This number includes calls for service, deputy-initiated files, as well as traffic citations. Deputies issued 1,115 traffic citations in addition to 79 parking citations. Deputies investigated 146 traffic accidents ranging from major injury to minor fender benders to hit-and-run incidents. They investigated 67 DUIs, and 29 of those were arrested. Our commercial enforcement officer issued 50 citations and referenced two quality-of-life issues, which is loitering and panhandling, and we responded to 91 calls for service. And in addition, our homeless outreach team generated and pooled 30 outreach files. And that is all.
Thank you very much for that report. Prime Minister, what do you have first?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Attorney General?
I have no report, no closed session today.
Well, you know what, we can stay here, we can go home and watch Cody Lee, it's up to everybody here.
Move adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.